All right, then I'd like to call the order, the Hollis School Board for Wednesday, December 2nd, 2020. I'll go ahead and ask for any agenda adjustments at this time?
No, there are no agenda adjustments.
Anything from the membership? Seeing none, we'll move right into correspondence, resignations, and nominations.
Just a couple pieces of informational. We do need a non-public tonight, just so that we can plan that as we move through the discussions.
Okay.
On your tables when you came in, I provided you two pieces of budget material. One is our typical round-by-round.
Yep.
The other is the Excel spreadsheet. We don't spend a lot of time on the Excel spreadsheet. That's just every line item that exists in the budget. I'm going to walk you through these later. We're, I'm happy to say, kind of finalizing the budget process. It's going extremely well again, and I'd like to publicly thank the Budget Committee. And Carol is our representative. It has gone very well. The other piece is, I provided each of you, which you had received an electronic copy, of the conflict waiver.
Mm-hmm.
Because of the property and Rob serving as chairman, but also as a board member, and I'm the superintendent of multiple districts, so this is just something we need to do. Those documents that I just spoke about will be emailed to Dawn and included with the minutes, so the community will have all of that information. And then, lastly, tonight-
Question on that.
Sure.
Is that adequate, from a legal perspective, for public disclosure?
Yes.
Doing what you're saying-
Yes, it's just basically, we're notifying everybody that we recognize a conflict, and the conflict exists, and that we're working with legal counsel. Because we may, A, not decide to do a bond. If we don't do a bond, then we may not do a long-term lease, so it's more a step to be prepared, should we want to move forward.
Okay.
And then, I have a document, we're going to vote tonight, on the infrastructure. These are projects that the state did a 80/20 grant a while back. They are closing now, and the documents I have just recognized that we have completed the projects that we said we would, and that the board is aware of those projects. And then Kelly will file these with the state, and then they will reimburse us for the 80% of the projects. You may have forgotten, but our projects were all used for security measures. So we installed cameras, things of that nature, in the buildings, and that's gone very well. And I'd like to recognize Rich Raymond, because that falls under his IT umbrella, and he has been working diligently since the summer to finalize these pieces. So that's it for correspondence.
I guess we can move on at 6:02 to approval of the minutes of November 2020.
For November 4th, 2020, the following amendments were offered. In each instance, it occurs, replace Member Howie with Member Arthur. Page 1, line 24 and 28, correct the spelling of Nancy Kringle-Berns. Page 3, line 3, replace that with than. Page 4, line 10, insert that before none. Page 5, line 10, insert the number of before overall cases. Page 7, line 36, replace teachers with teaches. Page 7, line 8, replace frame with framework. Page 7, line 12, correct the spelling of views. Page 7, line 38, replace for faculty for any member of our schools with for any member of the SAU faculty.
Second.
Any discussions or any additional amendments? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Or abstained? So we have four. Four? And one is abstention. Any other minutes we need to do?
No.
Yes, there's a public hearing.
What?
Hollis School Board-
Oh, sorry. I, okay. Got it. I move to accept as presented, the Hollis School Board Public Hearing, November 4th, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion or amendments? Seeing none, all in favor? And opposed? And abstention? So 4-0-1 again. I think that's everything, if I'm not mistaken? All right, so we can move to public input. I don't know if we have any public tonight, so we'll kind of lead it over if we get this huge influx of public that wants to talk, and then we will revisit that. Why don't we move straight ahead into the principal reports?
I'm not going to spend a lot of time reading the principals' reports to you. I just want to highlight a couple things. Hughes is looking for a custodian. We had a gentleman move on to his train career, his degree field, and we wish him the best. Aaron Karen, Adam Karen, had done a great job for us. We hope all goes well for him. We have marked our parking lots, so we are all ready for snow, which we hope we get none of. At the primary school, the annual heating and maintenance work is all done for the winter season. We do our annual check. And then we've been inspected by the fire department, which happens regularly, and we're just waiting for any feedback they may have. One other thing I'd like to highlight, we did have on November 30th the option to switch from in-person to remote. At Hughes, one student moved from in-building to remote, and one student came back from remote to the building. At the primary, we still have families waiting to be on the list for the next round, but at this time, they held firm to their original commitments, so nobody made any switches. But they're looking forward to the next one, and we set the date for that, I believe today was, we said January 29th, which approaches the next trimester, closing to the end of that. It works well for the co-op, because it's also the end of their quarter and marking periods. So we look forward to seeing what will take place there. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have for the principal's report.
Does that mean, for the HPS, we still have families wanting to be on the list for next round? Does that, but at this time, we have no switches? Does that mean the school didn't have availabilities for switches, or the families opted to wait on a list and not switch? That wasn't clear to me.
The families opted to wait.
Okay.
So we reached out and contacted them. They said, "Well, with everything going on, we'd like to stay where we are, but we'd like to stay on the list and be contacted when the next round comes."
All right. Cool. Very good. Thank you.
My pleasure.
I just had a quick question on the monthly enrollment breakout.
Okay.
Just that double asterisk at the bottom. What is the self-contained program for kindergarten?
So, we, you may recall that this year, we added a special educator to Hollis Primary School because of additional needs of some move-in students. That additional case manager became a self-contained special education classroom, serving students from kindergarten through grades three. So we still have an intensive needs preschool program.
Yeah.
But now we've added that K through three, and the teacher in that program will be able to service those students who are primarily, right now, in kindergarten, be able to service them grades K through three.
As they move.
And eventually, maybe follow them up through grade six.
Okay. Got you. Thanks.
Bob, is it correct to say that when we see self-contained anywhere in the SAU, it's essentially an alternative to an out-of-district placement or to bringing in contract workers? Right? We create a program for certain students who have certain needs.
It is-
The alternative would be that we would have to either hire contractors to provide those services, or place them out, the students out of district? Am I understanding that correctly?
Absolutely. It is part of the continuum of least restrictive to most restrictive learning environments, and without a self-contained program, the district would have to place a student out of district. And of course, it's always the goal of the district, to the greatest extent possible. We want to educate every child in Hollis, in the Hollis School District.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question about the overall enrollment. It's stark that we are down several dozen kids, and I'm assuming that those are families that have opted to homeschool. Do we have a substantial number of students? And this is not for this month, but I mean for this school year.
This school year, we have more than normal.
Yeah.
A number of families, based on their situations, felt it was easier to homeschool.
Sure.
So I say our numbers are up, but many of those notices that came to me, and then I processed through Bob's office, basically said it was because of the pandemic, and it was their expectation to return, you know, once we were through this, whether it be this year or next September.
I think at this time of year, the Budget Committee often is concerned about class size, number of sections, et cetera. We're looking light in that respect, but if my understanding is correct, homeschool families are allowed to request an immediate return to our enrollment in the buildings or, you know, remote, however it works out with you guys, so that we have to have that capacity, especially in a situation, I think, I'm saying this as a statement, I'm really trying to formulate it as a question, so I apologize if I sound like a know-it-all. So that, it's kind of like the buses, we have to have a seat for those kids, because typically, they've been enrolled, right?
Yeah.
And then, because it's such a fluid situation, we can't assume that those several dozen kids are not returning to the buildings. Is that right?
You're absolutely correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And the other piece is sometimes families will opt to be with us for certain things.
Right.
Like we've had homeschool families come in for music or for art. Sometimes when they get older, what you see a lot at the high schools, they'll come in for the sciences, because that's very difficult to do at home, and they have that ability to come in and utilize the services they need from us as well.
But with respect to classroom teachers, students per section, et cetera, I think this year is unusual. It's an anomalous situation to have this many kids out.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, moving right along, then. Let's get into the discussion of our COVID-19 eight updates.
Yep. I'll turn it over to Bob.
All right. Our schools continue to do a phenomenal job of managing the pandemic, and that really is the result of the efforts of our staff, our students, and our parents as well. To date, we have a total of six confirmed cases of COVID-19 in the Hollis School District. That's three at HPS and three at Hughes. Across SAU 41, we have a total of 16 cases. And when you compare that to neighboring communities, and a lot of this data is available on the dashboard of the Department of Health and Human Services, you'll see that the number of cases in our schools is incredibly low compared to not only the neighboring schools, but schools throughout the state of New Hampshire. And again, this is due to our tight protocols and our mitigation efforts. Really, three items: mask-wearing, social distancing, hand washing and sanitizing. It's highly effective strategies that have allowed us to keep our schools open. Additionally, you'll notice that many schools throughout the state of New Hampshire, including a lot of our area schools, are not able to offer a full-time option that SAU 41 is able to offer. Today, we held our weekly phone conference with Dr. Chan, the state epidemiologist for the Department of Health and Human Services. We had a lengthy discussion. Some of you may have seen that in the news today, the Centers for Disease Control provided some considerations to state agencies to reduce the quarantine time for those who have been exposed to someone with COVID-19. The CDC has asked state agencies to consider reducing that time from 14 days down to 10 days, and then even further down to seven days with a negative test. Dr. Chan has indicated that the Department of Health and Human Services will not be implementing these considerations at this time. He believes that the standard of 14 days continues to remain the safest option for our state, but Department of Health and Human Services will continue to evaluate these considerations. Again, the Centers for Disease Control makes recommendations to state agencies. It's the state agencies that get to determine whether or not they want to actually implement them. We follow the Department of Health and Human Services recommendations. Additionally, there was some optimism in the phone call today. We had a conversation about vaccines and vaccine distributions. As Department of Health and Human Services has indicated, they haven't given us a timeline, but they say vaccines will arrive shortly. And the first administration of vaccines will be to critical healthcare workers, and we learned today that school nurses are considered critical healthcare workers, and will be the first in the state to receive the vaccine. So again, I want to thank all of our staff, our students, and our community. We're doing a really incredible job of managing these very difficult times. I'll entertain any questions that folks might have.
Bob, I just want to clarify, those numbers that you stated at the beginning, those are cumulative over the course. Those are not current active cases.
Those are cumulative, and that's a good point, Carol. I appreciate you raising that. I should have indicated, there's only been one new case in the last month. So that, I think that's important to realize, that, you know, in the first month of school, you know, we did have a few cases, but right now, we have six. There's been one in the last month, and we only have one active case, someone who's in self-isolation as we speak.
Are we getting a good percentage of compliance to the rules of operations and everything, or are we getting, seeing any pockets of pushback?
You know, the senior leadership team, we've spent a lot of time in schools in the last couple of weeks, and to see the level of compliance, I know we had had conversations about, can a preschooler or a kindergarten wear a mask? They can, and they're doing it quite effectively. You know, our staff are doing an incredible job. We really, you know, we have very few to no non-compliance issues. And our principals are very diligent, and the staff, you know, police themselves when it comes to maintaining the standards that we've set, so I'm pretty impressed with what I've seen so far.
Do you feel, I mean, when we first started, I got the sense that with, there was a heightened level of concern, we're reopening with staff and things like that. Do you feel that that has waned a little bit? Because even though we're seeing, you know, spikes in other states and in our state and in the region, but we're starting to build a track record of being able to, we respond, or we have, our tight protocols seem to be having an effect. Is that, do you think that that's giving the staff a little more assurance?
I still think that there's, yeah, I still think there's an increased amount of vigilance in our schools, because I think people are watching the news, they're seeing what's going on in the greater community.
Yep.
We've been very fortunate that even with increasing numbers throughout the state, there has not been a single, any evidence to suggest that there's any school-based community transmission in our school. And actually, across the state, there's actually a very small amount of school-based transmission. So I think people are relieved, but I don't think it has caused them to be any less vigilant in their mitigation efforts.
Okay. Thank you.
And what about visitors or other adults who use the space like we do? I've noticed over the months that after school, like at board meetings, some members don't wear masks once we're seated apart, but the school rules are, we have to be wearing masks. So is that improving? Is that a problem? Hello?
So the, again, we have a very limited number of visitors that enter the buildings just with our protocols, and in fact, most school business that requires someone to enter the school can be done in the school vestibule without ever having entry into the building. In terms of the board meeting, there has been, you know, typical participation, which is relatively low, and with the new state mask mandate, individuals who would come to a public meeting, such as this in a public building, would be required, under the governor's order, to wear a mask. And we have not had any issues where people have refused to comply since the beginning of school, that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Well, it's nice to see all that deep work we did over the summer to build this plan. It seems to be, at least to some degree, bearing fruit for us, for sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah? Any other questions or comments? Very well, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move ahead to calendar discussion, January 2021.
Yes, I wanted to update the board. Our COVID numbers, we're doing very, very well, and we're very happy with our protocols. What we're running into is staffing issues. To give you an example, today, Bob and I were lunch monitors at the high school because of unforeseen circumstances, and that's really where we're getting hit. You know, everybody's doing their job, but if you have to quarantine, you have to quarantine. So we're looking at, as you may have heard in the community, in January, from January 4th through the 15th, which is a two weeks after break, to going fully remote. This is based on, a couple of our neighboring districts have already voted to go remote for that period of time, and that will, again, mean I will lose three, four, or five staff members who will have to stay home because of their own children, because there is no daycare right now. To try to find daycare at this time of year, when many daycares have not even opened, is beyond our capabilities. So that time, we would go fully remote. Monday, January 18th, would be Martin Luther King Day, which is a scheduled day off for everybody, and then we would return to our model that we're presently using of in-person or remote, whatever the parent had selected, on January 19th. One of the key pieces of this is during the 4th through the 15th, we are going to ask families to complete the symptom monitoring sheets, and our nurses will monitor that data, so that we know when we're coming back, what is the status of how we're doing. You know, just to come back on the 19th and have no idea how people are doing, makes no sense. The other reason is not only staffing, but travel. Our families did a remarkable job over Thanksgiving. Those people who had to travel or spend time with family notified their principals. We were able to accommodate them. We have some students in quarantine, just as safety measures, and I really, really appreciate that. And a number of families opted to change their plans for Thanksgiving when they heard what we were considering for the holiday season. So, based on what I know for staff and family travel, I think our level of potential need to quarantine after the January holidays is essential. So I will be letting families know, because as you know, from the passage of the plan, that put that decision back in the hands of the SAU administration, and Bob, Gina, and I have been meeting with our leadership team. It's my intent to kind of send a clarification notice out, just to get it on people's radar. I will also let them know that really, from now until the 18th, we're going to do our best to stay open, but it's kind of also my kind of, please be prepared, because if three or four staff members were to get sick or need to be quarantined, I'm not sure that I can guarantee that we could open. I do want to thank all the families again. We had a number of college students come home, and they have signed up to be substitutes, and they are in our buildings, just doing yeoman's work. So that is greatly appreciated. In terms of the January 19 piece, we would get something out the week of the, around the 12th or 13th, was the Tuesday or Wednesday before we would be scheduled to reopen, so a week's notice. So if we had to, again, continue in remote learning, you've got a week's time to plan, where are your children going to go, and how are you going to make this work? If we do intend to open, that will give everybody time to start working with preparing kids to come back. We were very excited to open up after Thanksgiving, because I think that needed to happen. I think, especially for kids. I think sometimes we forget, and they do love being here. As Bob said, one of our priorities has been to get into the buildings, and there's nothing better than going around and seeing the kids playing in the playground, on the field, or being at lunch or in class. To Rob's earlier question, you know, I spent the day at the high school today, and the compliance of the kids is tremendous. I mean, you know, we procted the lunches, they've got the routine down. Just so you know, at the tables at the high school, there's a QR code, so the child comes down, they scan their phone, so we know who sat at the table. So from a contract tracing point of view, we know exactly where everybody's sitting. So you can change your seat any day, you just have to scan your code. And again, we've been doing this since we went outdoors, because we put the signs outdoors, and the kids are just great about it. You know, because again, QR codes and high school kids go hand-in-hand, so it's nothing to them. So doing a tremendous job, and I also want to, again, publicly thank food service, because at the elementary level, the lunches are delivered to the rooms every day. So they get packed into a styrofoam container, it's, you know, individual lunches. At the middle school and the high school, you walk through the line, but you're just picking up a container, and then you're moving to your seat. So that's the plan. If anything changes, the board will get an email from either Bob, Gina, or I, and then it'll also give us time to reflect on any new CDC or Department of Health and Human Services notices that come out during that basically month, because we'll have the regular scheduled remote days, December, I think it's 21st and 22nd, go into the holiday break, come out of the break, go into two weeks remote, and then be back.
Okay, so that's plan of record, unless something else changes.
Right.
So the 4th through the 18th is plan of record. We are pivoting to remote.
No, the 4th, from now until the 18th of December, we are open.
Right. No, I meant January, 4th through the 18th.
Of January, yes.
Of January, plan of record is we're pivoting.
Correct.
Other, barring other things.
Right. And that's basically, kind of needs to happen, based on what I know is going to happen with staffing, because Amherst, like us, is still open. Their board have already approved their 4th through the 18th. I know that impacts almost a half a dozen more teachers than we already have out, so we simply wouldn't be able to staff it. It gets to the point where we'd have more teachers at home paying monitors, when I, you know, from an educational point of view, the delivery is the exact same, it's just the locations are switched. And then, if anything changes from tonight until the 18th of December, I will be in touch, and it is my intent to give families as much notice as possible. And it may involve something like, we had a COVID case, as you may know, at the high school last night, that came in late. We were able to get that done, all cleaned up, all those things taken care of, and open this morning. If they came in much later than that, my step would be to have that one school that may be impacted just close for that one day, to make sure we can do all the contact tracing. I'm not really worried about cleaning the building, because our custodians have that down to a science, and I believe we can get that done before the morning, and with having a facilities director now, who's not afraid to get his hands dirty, it's gone very, very well. I know about nine o'clock last night, he was contacted, and by the time we closed up shop at the high school, all the impacted areas had been sprayed down, cleaned again, and got a whole second coating over there, and then all the other rooms had had their normal cleaning on a regular day. Any other questions on calendar?
Yeah. Is the after-school program currently operating?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
So my first thought was of the families that are going to have to make, you know, new decisions in terms of their work, now that their children are going to be home. Is there any kind of consideration? I, you know, you mentioned more monitor, you know, the idea of more, is there any possibility of a model of that at the elementary level, to have availability, classroom space to work remotely, but in a monitored way? Do we, have we?
We have reached out to the Brookline after-school program, that's been in Brookline forever, and they are looking at the potential of being able to offer services. For them, it's staffing and those type of things, but they are investigating that model, and if we could, if we can, we will.
Offer the, like a parallel program here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, and again, we'll reach out to the national agency that uses our buildings now. It's just, for them, it's just like us, it's a staffing issue.
Uh-huh.
To extend their hours to that time of the day is very difficult.
Okay. And so there's nothing that we can do as, in a board capacity, to support that, those types of things?
I think in some ways, that's a parent choice. You know, I know it's very difficult, and I sympathize, but again, if it isn't one of the programs that we've kind of had license for our buildings.
Uh-huh.
My concern is liability.
Yeah.
Because we'd still be responsible for that liability.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Andy, can you clarify, because I missed something? December 18th, we're going fully remote?
December 18th, that was the scheduled date for us to go to vacation on the calendar, but the following, 21st and 22nd were scheduled to remote days.
Okay. That's all right.
And then the 23rd was scheduled as a collaboration day for teachers.
Got it.
So those, that will not change.
Great. So you said that January 4th through 18th, remote, and then reevaluate, but then you also said that you're aiming for January 29th as the next remote in-person switch date?
Correct.
Can you tell me what the gap is for? The 10th?
Well, the gap was chosen, well, the 29th was chosen based on grading.
Oh, grading period.
It's almost the end of our trimester at the elementary level, and it is the end of the semester at the high school and middle school.
Got it.
Because one of the things that we get concerned about is, I'm the classroom teacher, Bob is the remote teacher, the child moves from my classroom to Bob, we still have to give grades, so we're trying to just make sure that that window is as short as possible.
It's the grading period. Thank you. It's the grading period, thank you.
Just next is the diversity, equity, and inclusion?
Just, does anybody else have any other questions? Are there any board actions you're seeking relating to any of these plans for your January proposals?
No, everything we're talking about is in the master plan, which you approved.
Okay.
You know, you gave us the ability to pivot whenever we needed to.
Pivot when you need to, okay.
So this is more informational. It has been shared with Brookline and Hollis just by, I mean, Brookline and the Co-op just by the nature of the meetings. So it is out, but intentionally, I'm not sending communication to families out of courtesy to this board and making sure everybody gets the chance to ask their questions.
Okay. Thank you. So we can go ahead with the DEI committee updates?
Tiffany happens to be here tonight. I will publicly thank her again for her efforts on this. We are working on definitions around equity, diversity, and inclusion. We are working on, reflecting on the resolution that was sent to the school board and seeing how we can tweak that. And we're working to create a model that will be used as our framework for our future work. And I'll just give you a quick summary of what that kind of would mean. If you just think about any square piece of paper and at the center of that paper is our students. You know, if we're in the Hollis district, so that'd be, what do we want a sixth grader to know before they leave Hollis? And then what do we want a 12th grader to know before they leave the SAU? And then around that, we're taking existing concepts that we've already been using in our strategic plan and that exist as a district and moving that forward. Now I'll give you some examples. This district, as well as other districts in the Co-op, spends a lot of time, energy, and financial resources on professional development. So how do we use those to maximize that? We have an instructional best practice committee that Gina works with. It's part of our curriculum committee. And it's not about what we teach because we already have a curriculum. We have a board-approved curriculum, it's already there. It's how we teach it. You know, what simple tweaks can we make that will allow us to deliver better lessons? So the framework is being worked on. We have moved those meetings after further discussions to become more of public meetings. So we're going to do our first one tomorrow night via Zoom. I don't, we've all been on Zoom. I don't know if it's the most ideal platform. But it will work until we can get back face to face. I think most committee members realize that the best way we could do this would be face to face. But, you know, we're in the middle of a pandemic, so we're making do. And I just want to thank everybody for their efforts. And I also want to thank the public for their patience. Because I think there'll be a really good end product if people allow us the time and the effort to get there. And in January, you'll get more of a substantial update. I think we'll be able to bring you some documents that would be drafts. We wouldn't be looking for an action. But at the same time, it would be taking us further along. So it goes well and I, and I thank everybody for their input and their collaboration.
Just for folks at home, where can they get the meeting information and times? And maybe the Zoom link if they wanted to?
The Zoom agenda is posted on the SAU main page. It's posted on all the district pages under documents on the district pages. It's posted in each of the buildings in a hand notice. And the Zoom link is right with the meeting and it has the passcodes that are there. Again, I've been doing enough Zooms lately to know that it is imperfect. So that's why we'll do the best we can. We may switch, I talked to Rich Raymond tonight. We may switch to a paid account to give us greater access and greater ability to use that. And if we do that, you know, we'll designate certain members of the committee because like the 17th of this month would be our next meeting. I'll be with all of you at the SAU for the public hearing on the SAU budget. So Tiffany, Andrew Scott, and Marie Ramos will kind of coordinate that night.
I just wanted to note that on the webpage, because I'm right there, it's right under announcements. It's listed as superintendent's committee meeting if people want to know just where to click.
I appreciate that. Because I know, again, it's, people will email me and ask me and honestly, sometimes I don't know because I don't, I'm not necessarily the person who puts it on there. I send the email to get it posted.
Yeah, so it's not listed as like DEI, it's superintendent's committee meeting. Click on that and you'll find it.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments relating to the updates for DEI?
I have a question on, I happened to come across the Co-op agenda for upcoming. And there's a bunch of documents there related to this that I don't see on our agenda unless I missed it. There's a mission sort of state, type of statement and a draft resolution.
On the Co-op agenda?
Or maybe it's not on the agenda. I came across it and I don't know where, I saw it because of course I closed my window and then I don't know where.
It's with the, it's with the agenda for the.
Oh, it's part, it's part of your superintendent's committee meeting.
Yes, the documents follow that, yeah.
Can I interrupt myself and say bravo to Gina Burgskog and the rest of whoever for the new website? Lightning fast, things are much, much better organized, really appreciate. I just wish Google calendars worked better, but that's not the problem. Yeah, so I came across the, I was looking at the, I'm sorry, I got mixed up between agendas I was looking at. So there are a bunch of documents there that are part of your agenda. They're draft documents and, but they're not really part of the documentation for tonight to talk about.
No, because they, it's two separate pieces yet. When we decided to make the superintendent's committee public, we'll post our agendas, we'll post a document similar to what we would do for a board meeting. Or another example would be when we do a policy meeting. We post what policies are going to be discussed and, you know, the time and the date. And then those drafts will eventually reach consensus to me. And once they reach consensus to me, then I would put them into a board packet for a board discussion. So I think the first time you'll see a draft of those documents potentially coming to you as a board would be your January meeting.
Okay, I'm so, so sorry I missed the last month's meeting. It was an inadvertent error. I continue to really struggle with the issue that gave me heartburn the previous month, which is the composition of this committee, not who's on it, but who's not on it. Meaning there are, there's no board representation. Now that it's open, that's great because I had seriously considered a write-to-know request also. So this is good, a good development. I'm concerned, I don't, as a board member, with my limited experience, but the experience I have, I feel this isn't a committee of the board, this is a committee of the superintendent.
That's correct.
So unlike the policy committee or even the facilities committee, et cetera, which are chartered by the board and voted on through a charter process that we draft and all, you know, vote on. This is an advisory committee to you as the executive of the SAU and doesn't have any authority.
That's correct.
Over the school board or, if I understand it right, or over the district itself. It's an advisory group that you're using as you would use any other resource.
Right.
And the committee understands that.
Yes, yep.
I read the minutes from the last meeting and I read everything Tiffany submitted and I saw that explicitly stated. But I need to say it in my own voice because that's the only time I can remember anything. So, okay.
The best.
I know everybody's doing their best. I don't, it's such a big subject that I'm in an alert circle state, which is I feel I have to bear my responsibility as fully as possible. I apologize that I get very emotional about it sometimes. It's not through mistrust.
Oh, no, and again.
That I don't want our responsibility and, and authority as a school board to be eroded by community members who've misunderstood the limits of their inputs.
Oh, no, it's been made perfectly clear to the committee. And the example I would use, Tammy, most recent example before this is when I formed an advisory committee to me for the pandemic on all the medical issues.
Right.
Because there are certain topics that we're discussing that people on the committee have more expertise than I do. So the, right now, the person who's getting the most education is the superintendent. And then eventually I'll bring it to the board. And the board could say, thank you very much, but we're not doing anything. The board could say at that point that they want to take it and do their own. Because again, right now, it's kind of under the SAU umbrella of all the districts. But ultimately Hollis could have something that looks different than Brookline, that looks different than the Co-op. Now, we're, we're hoping to, as much as possible, keep that somewhat uniform because we're just looking through the lens of a student. But your, your comments are valid, they're heard, and I think we'll be in a good shape.
Someone else has to come in.
And the new lights weren't supposed to do this, so we'll have them back again.
Energy conservation at its best.
There's one other item, and this is something I intend to be a pain in the butt about. We have no faculty or staff of color to speak of. There's very little ethnic diversity. There may be diversity in other areas that, the diversity and inclusion lists that I saw in this draft, which I commend entirely, of course, include. And I'm pleased to see it expand to that, just as you pointed out it needed to. And I have no issue with the expansion of the sources of inequity that are being identified and potentially addressed. But explicitly on the, in that one subcategory of people of color and people of diverse origins, if I can put it that way. I certainly hope that through the process, not of necessarily creating the resolution, but through the entire process of remedying the inequities that we identify and discover and want to address, that we keep in mind there may be areas of expertise that our staff and our community don't have. Areas of, that are specific to the identifying and remedying of issues. We wouldn't hire me to do a program for people who are hearing impaired or et cetera. And the blind leading the blind can't happen. That's not, that would defeat the whole purpose. That's the statement I want to make.
No, and I would say it's similar to a question that I think Brooke asked probably a few months back. If we get to a point that we feel there's an agency, a person, or somebody that can enhance what we're doing, we're not opposed to doing that. But that would involve financial resources and that would have to come to the board.
Right.
You know, so again, we're, I'll say in our infancy. And I believe the only other one I know who's kind of what I'll say tackling, well, two other districts that are either tackling or somewhat into the process. Dover is launching their similar committee. And Exeter is further along than us. So we will reach out to both of those districts and find out what they're doing as well.
Interesting.
Are you all set, are you all set, Tammy? Okay. I guess I, I'm used to doing that now, like taking my mask off to speak. But I think you can hear me with the mask on, yes? Okay. So I just want to make sure that I understand the expectation for, for this board is, in terms of the process, is the committee is finalizing the redrafted resolution? And the expectation is that that will be brought to this board in January for us to review?
I don't know if the committee will have a finalized document for you to review, but I believe the committee will send you a document and be able to give you an update of where we are and why we're there at that point.
Okay, because I, this has been ongoing, you know, this is six months in, in the process now. And I would like to see that piece move forward so that then the work can move beyond, you know, this first step of, of a resolution.
Yeah, I guess I'm in agreement, but I see it a little differently.
Okay.
Because I, I just look at the resolution, the definitions, and kind of the framework all needing to come together. Because I think when you only look at one piece in isolation, it might not project the correct picture. But again, that's something that Tiffany and I can bring back to the committee and get their thoughts on. And I know it's been six months, but at the same time, like, there are times when the best plans, like I didn't expect to spend my day at the high school tonight.
Understood.
I didn't expect at 10 o'clock last night to be doing COVID. So I mean, as much as this is important, it's very important to the committee and to me, we're doing the best we can in very unique circumstances.
I'm just taking a processing moment because, okay, I'll leave it at that at the moment. But I have, I'll leave it at that. And hopefully we'll learn more on Thursday and we'll go.
Yeah, I'm wondering if there's some work that the board might be able to delve into in parallel. One would be a review of our policies, that they are up to date from a standpoint of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I suspect they are. We've been doing a very good job at reviewing these things. But as the policy committee is doing their work, maybe they can look at it from that.
Through that lens.
Perspective. And reach out to maybe subject matter experts or legal experts. Things that, hey, do we need to update something here? This is, you know, you know, this was done eight years ago or something like that. So there may be things that we can do.
That's interesting, yeah.
Because it's really the only thing we do is policy, right? So, and anything we can do going forward is going to have to realize itself in some sort of policy or else it doesn't last.
I'll interrupt and say, I think, with all due respect, I think we're largely in a modern era with the policies that concern these issues. Not to say they don't deserve another look, but not eight years old. But I think also to add to you, if I may, is the handbooks. The student direct, the student handbooks and any teacher procedures. I know you want to do all of this in an integrated way within the work you started with this committee, but is something we're outstanding there also?
I'm sure we would be open to any recommendations by January if there's work that we can do. I think, I think just from our committee work, we can at least look at our policies from that perspective. I don't know if there's other things we can do in parallel that would at least provide some level of sponsorship to the work the committee's doing. I don't know, but trying to see what other things that.
You know, we're enthusiastic.
We do have a committee member who his background is legal and he has already volunteered to look at policies and handbooks. Not from the sense of, you know, his legal opinion, but giving what his thoughts are having been in that field for so many years and potentially save us time before we go to our own legal counsel because obviously they're the ones that ultimately have to defend it. But I think, and we can discuss this tomorrow night, but I think I have somebody that'd be very interested and could, you know, join on policy and be provided our handbooks and go over those.
Maybe we can look at it from, you know, the big heavy hitter policies, right? And, you know, relating to, you know, operations and things like that. How we deliver education, things like that may be a good place to start. And certainly any input would be through the committee. We don't necessarily want to have an open forum here where people are coming and giving us all sorts of input on specific policies that aren't on an agenda. But certainly if there's input, certainly through our, through Amy, our chairman of that.
Right, and the other piece that I like about that is our policy meetings are already public.
Yes.
So we wouldn't have to add another step.
No.
We just incorporate it into those meetings, which I think would be very helpful. So I'll coordinate with Amy offline and we'll see what we can move forward.
Sounds good.
Anything else on DEI?
Thanks, Rob.
Sure. Okay, moving on, let's talk a little bit about the FY22 budget overview.
Okay.
How's our guide plane looking? We're going to land the plane?
We are going to land it very shortly. It's going to be a smooth landing.
Nice, smooth landing.
Thank Carol and Kelly who have been attending the budget committee meetings. As you know, we're trying to reduce administrative staff at meetings just so we don't have a COVID piece and then we're down a bunch of administrators. So I'm going to just start with the, basically it's the last page of the Excel spreadsheet. There's a couple of blank pages. I always have some blank sheets because when it comes to budgets, that's what I mark up. So when I made the copy, I forgot to take out the blank pages. So the last page, it comes down where you see we're presently proposing an operating budget of $163,017, which is a 1.19% increase. That's the. budget of $163,017, which is a 1.19% increase. That's the, the last update we gave to the budget committee. We have a HESA contract of $55,034. We have the SAU assessment that might change a little bit one way or the other because that budget just got finalized, but at this version it was $597, $656. The annual contingency article for $95,000. The SAU maintenance trust, also known as our rent, of $23,970. The Hollis School District Maintenance Trust, again, is funded at $120,000. And the Special Ed Trust is $25,000. And we presently have in there, even though we haven't decided if it's moving forward yet, the interest payment for the first half year of the bond. So, that's why you see the SAU bond bond of $28,000. That just represents the interest payment. If the voters were to support all of those articles, they would be passing a budget of $14,788,745 and 17 cents, which means our overall increase would be $290,322, or exactly a 2% increase. At our last meeting, we were presently $23,000 and a little bit above guidance. Guidance is the number that the budget committee assigns to our budget. It's a very valid formula that has worked well for this district. So, at this time, I'm going to shift over to the multiple rounds and kind of walk you through that so you understand, and let you know how I'm going to get the $23,000 to bring us to guidance.
So, just a question. So, as part of the guidance, so if we're, if we're slightly over at 2%, then guidance must be like 1.8% or something?
I believe guidance was right around there. I don't remember the exact number. We did get some relief for guidance.
I was just going to ask, are we seeking relief in any way?
We did get, the budget committee gave both the town and the schools relief on the New Hampshire retirement increase and the, and the health increase.
Yeah, those are big ones.
This is a very good budget. There's been a, a wonderful dialogue to arrive at this, and really, we'll be done with a budget by Christmas. So, switching over to the rounds, you see the, the multiple rounds, you can see what has started and what has been cut, and I'm going to talk about a couple of other things to arrive at that $23,000. You may recall from previous years, Paula had been requesting to move the environmental science up to a full-time position. It has failed for a couple of years, but this year it has made it through the budget. It will help Paula tremendously with her master schedule and prep time and things like that for teachers. So, we have those costs there. As part of our wellness policy, we need a wellness coordinator. So, we're putting a $500 stipend basically to each school, and that stipend will go to the wellness coordinator for that district. You may recognize that in the past, we've used shared positions. The newest one that has been very, very effective for us was the shared nurse. So, today when we had a nurse out sick, we have our own nurse who's full-time on staff that just goes to that building anywhere in the SAU. At this time, she's gotten to know all the other nurses and the majority of our students, and it's very, very seamless, and she's been a rock star in dealing with the COVID because she had happened to be in the building where our first case occurred, learned exactly what was needed to be done. So, now when we get a COVID case, she moves over to that building for us because contact, contact tracing is so important. Here we have three proposed positions. One is a directed facility sub, one is a directed food service sub, and one is a directed classroom substitute. What we determined is because of the pandemic, we put a substitute in each building, and we were able to do that for the sub-line. So, we're going to take that out of the, out of the budget from both buildings. So, there's $16,224 to that $23,000, and we'll use our sub-line next year for that permanent sub, because that's basically what it is. We're also going to take out the food service sub because our priority this year after meeting with leadership team is our facility sub. You know, when we have a maintenance personnel, it's, it's very difficult. They don't have the same sub-list as teachers. So, our priority is the $9,779 for a directed facility sub. You see Hughes and HPS share at that price. That cost has been allocated by the district, and they're each paying a prorated share for that position. So, when we take out the food service sub, there's another $4,078. So, we're quickly approaching the $23,000 that we need for guidance. Bob touched upon it a little earlier. We had to put in a self-contained intensive K-3, so that is just formally getting that into the budget this year. Under academics, we have a list of programming, DRA, which is an online assessment, Quick Words, Literacy Footprints, C-Sup Puzzle, Spelling City. At Hughes, we have the breakout box membership and Generation Genius. These are all programs that we have vetted. Teachers have used them. They have gone through the process of being submitted to Gina in two capacities. One is curriculum, and second, in her tech capacity to make sure that if we're bringing something on, that it complies with all the requirements for security and safety for our students to use that program online. Under new equipment, we are getting Chromebooks for the second grade, and we're getting corresponding charging stations for each of those classrooms. We do not have any new computer requests at Hughes, just the way it fell. Replacement computer equipment, we have staff laptops. We do approximately 10 per year so that we maintain a quality inventory, and it takes about five years for, so you're, every five years, you're getting a new laptop.
Roll it all the way over.
Okay. Projectors, we're installing five new ones in the primary school. The copier in the office there is scheduled for its upgrade, so that is budgeted there. The nurse is getting a new printer, and then we have four Chromebooks, and we're evaluating that inventory, so that's still subject to potentially an adjustment. That's why the asterisk is there for EOL. You see basically the same pieces at the upper, except you'll see that we have a wealth of Chromebook replacements, and that's just the cycle. That number is the worst-case number, and the reason that may go down is because as part of the pandemic, we use some of our title money to purchase computers, and they're coming in sporadically. We have computers for everybody, but the other day, we received 49 new Chromebooks that came over to Hughes, and then we returned some of the inventory we had borrowed for the co-op to start the year. Okay?
You know, just, just a comment here, Andy, if I may. It, it's really nice to see that we're, have this cadence of changing over technology. I can tell you about six or seven years ago, that was not the case, and we would be woefully deep in the weeds with really old equipment. And now, I really get the sense that we're managing this stuff way better and almost automatically. And I can tell you, that wasn't the case. I mean, we really struggled to figure out, well, what do we do here? And now, it's not even a second thought. So, we've come a long way.
Andy, when you cycle out equipment, where does it go?
Some of it gets, I'll, I'll say hand-me-downs. Like, I'll give you the, just because it's fresh, because we discussed it today, but we're recycling some laptops at the high school library. But those laptops will still be in good enough shape for email, Word, and that. So, those will be handed down to our parents, who are usually just in supporting roles and don't need the, I mean, they'll have the internet but don't have as much programming as a classroom teacher. And then eventually, Rich tells me that they can't go anywhere, and they go off to the tech pickup during the summer.
Sounds good. Thanks.
That takes us to hosted software. This is where I'm going to pick up the last of the money. We are looking at GoGuardian, which is a filtering software, and what we've decided to do, we originally put it in every school, but as we went through the pandemic and learned so much more about software and filtering and our, and our filtering systems, we just don't see at this time the need for K-6. Do we run into an occasional issue with a very intelligent sixth grader, and we have to deal with stuff? Yes. But to spend the money and the magnitude for this, we don't feel it's necessary at this time. So, what we're going to do is pilot it seven to 12, in grade seven through 12, make sure it does what they've told Rich it's going to do, and then if it's something that we really see a benefit for, we would move forward with it. We, we originally looked at it because it's, it's something we were concerned about as Chromebooks went home, you know, if we went fully remote. But what we are seeing is not a need. Most elementary families are very diligent about that. It's, it, I've had one, one email since we began the school year regarding that, and it was just, again, a very smart young individual, and we corrected that with mom and dad, and we were both able to do some things and solve the issue. So, that'll be the, the last of the $23,000 and change that we need that will come out of the budget. We originally, under safety, as you know, we're finishing up the cameras, which you're going to sign the documents later. We're in very good shape, and again, that's a commendation to Bob. He has led our safety committee for a number of years. What you see there, it says FY23 because we decided that bollards are needed. So, we'll do some sort of poles or plants or something, containers, so you could never drive a vehicle right through the front doors of one of our buildings. But we decided in doing our research that we can get a much better price if we do all our schools at once. So, that'll be our safety item. You'll see that back again next year.
Is that, is that part of any audits that we've done in the past, like safety audits or anything? You may have touched on it. I was kind of reading something else, so I.
Yeah.
Yeah, every three years, the school, each school participates in an audit from the Department of Homeland Security.
Yes.
And that has been a recommendation. And again, we've received several commendations from the Department of Homeland Security for our diligence in following up with that audit report and checking off all those items that are outstanding.
Is this relatively a new recommendation, or has this been standing for a while?
I can comment on this. During H-step, when we were designing various things, we had, at one point, conceived of completely redoing the front portico of the primary school, for example. And there was some thought to building in this, this feature into the architectural, and that, that didn't pan out. We didn't do it. But I think there's been, this was on the list, and it's not that we failed to do it, it's just it wasn't the highest priority, either in the audits or in the design, but it was always on our, it never fell off the list.
Is, is there anything we need to think about from a standpoint of accelerating, getting these in place, and finding something in the budget, or pull in contingency?
When Homeland Security does the audit, they prioritize it, and then we're very fortunate, as you know, we have a great relationship with our local police department. So, our police chief and our SRO will come in and tell us, these are recommendations. So, the, the infrastructure grant was the cameras, you know, because now, like, a secretary sitting in a building can see any one of our doors and knows who's buzzing from any of those locations. We have key fobs in all our doors. You know, one of the things we have used the key fobs, it was just an access to the building. Now, every single staff member key fobs in and key fobs out. So, then we have automatic times for contact tracing, so you don't have to sit there and wonder, was I in the building? We can tell you, you left at 12:29, you couldn't have been there. So, you know, we're very confident, we're in very good shape, because what almost all of our buildings have is what I'll call the dual alcoves. So, you have to get into one location before you get into the next. So, even though you get into Hughes, you just get into a lobby, and everything's locked unless you're keyed into the front door. So, the, the bollards is just another step.
And the, the bollard installation has been a little challenging because of fire code issues related to egress. It's not as simple as just installing them. There'd have to be a certain design, a certain location.
There's a lot of thought behind it.
From my time at the middle school, there, there can oftentimes be a conflict between what's a recommendation from Homeland Security and what, you know, complies with, with fire code.
And was practicable.
Yeah, it's, it's not as easy as just putting something in front of the building.
It's to prevent someone from coming maliciously slamming into the school? Is that what it?
When you, when you talk Homeland Security, they plan for the, the worst of the worst attacks. So, that, that's what we do.
So, yeah, that's what I meant, but it like intentionally, intentionally crashing across a vehicle.
Just like you'd see, if you go to Walmart or any major retailer, they all have bollards.
Like Target has the big round.
In a different form. Target has the.
That's what we're talking about?
Like when you drive around back at the primary, and you see there's an area with these big steel pipes that stick up around some of the septic and the propane, that's where the bollard turns out to be.
Okay. Just, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, let us know if you need to accelerate that. It's worth a discussion, but anyway, that's just me.
Next, under building needs. Again, to Rob's earlier point, this goes a lot smoother now because Kelly has set up plans, and it's under $20,000 and over $20,000. So, from a budget committee standpoint, unless something is broken that we missed, there's no surprises.
Mm-hmm. That's key.
So, at HPS, we need some playground equipment. We are doing classroom furniture for grade three and changing out her intercom speakers and rewiring. So, that will be taken care of.
So, a lot of this comes out of our CIP plan. It's just, this is the year it's up.
Correct.
Here it is.
Right.
So, it's been, it's been on this long five-year plan and shared multiple times, multiple cycles.
And if, if we're having a bad year and something gets delayed, we know exactly what was delayed, and we move forward. At the, at Hughes, we continue to purchase fireproof filing cabinets for all our records. You may notice when you leave, our basketball hoops are in tough shape, so those will be getting fixed. And then, the water bottle filling station, there'll be, I believe it's either two or three done this school year, and then three done next summer, and they'll have been completely turned over to have the, the filling stations. That takes us to, I believe, am I at the end?
Andy, the filling stations, do those have any kind of filtration?
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
As part of them? The filling, the water filling stations, does that incorporate any type of water filtration, or is it just, just that it's a fill the water bottle rather than drink out of the faucet?
I'd have to look into it further. I recall it has a limited filtering. I, I wouldn't say it's like yubritter or anything like that.
Yeah.
But the, the piece that it gets us away from, that we've really noticed that the kids love, is no more using the bubbler and spreading germs that way.
Right.
And, you know, I think as a society, we're changing to always filling our own bottle, which is also helping reduce the waste of the plastic ones. So, that takes us back to what I already covered, the different warrant articles that we have before us, and you are aware now of how I will take out the $23,000 to arrive at guidance, which will be done at the next budget committee meeting by Kelly. And I'd take any questions, comments, and I do just want to conclude my portion of this by, again, thanking the budget committee for all their support and work with us. In your board packet tonight was also the calendar for our meetings for the budget season. So, the public hearing dates, we usually do that jointly over at the, the town hall on the 9th of February, but we'll have to talk about that. We may want to do it here, just because it's the largest setting with COVID. And then the school district meeting day, you're scheduled for March 10th, with a snow day of the 11th.
I had a question on that particular detail in our packet. Second, from the bottom, you have second session ballot voting, and you have, the co-op in Hollis has a 3-9-20-21 date?
Everybody votes on 3-9 for your local elections. It has nothing to do with the school district, but we list it because Brookline, it is their official voting day as an SB2 town.
As SB2, plus, plus voting in general.
It's voting. So, if there's a school position open for election, that's voting day for the board member positions.
I see. So, so that's why, oh, that's why they're germane to us?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
We kind of, Andy presented the whole three rounds of the budget. Looking at the totals on each subsection, very few of the numbers changed. I'm used to seeing this thing be a roller coaster, and it seems to me that you've done some very, very tight And it seems to me that you've done some very, very tight budgeting. And I see things here that are either directly related to COVID or like the, the self-contained program, et cetera, that are, you know, irreducible and things that are on the CIP like Rob brought up. And then a handful of things like the software that are, could come and grow, the playground equipment, depending on what we have. This is just the tightest round three, round one, two, three that I've seen. You guys are.
Good call out.
It seems to me that, you know, you kind of know what you're doing with this thing, at least this year, in a way that appears to me to be very locked in.
Well, and there's a couple of pieces. Before we started the budget, we recognized that this is a difficult time for families. I mean, some families are not working, others are working, and it is not the year necessarily to introduce a large budget increase if it can be avoided. Second thing is we are now basically on our cycles that we started a few years back regarding maintenance. So unless something broke, there shouldn't be any surprises. The other piece is a number of the things that you might have seen in this budget or last year's budget or next year's budget were done either with H-Step or will be taken care of with H-Smart. So there are a number of those factors that are coming into play. So it, it does get better, we get better at it. And I think the other thing is we gain confidence in each other, meaning the budget committee, the SAU and the school board to arrive at what students need. And I, I would say this, since I've been here, this budget once again moves things forward for students.
So with respect to revenues, you know, there's some state monies that are related to COVID. There are some savings from expenditures we didn't spend in the spring, et cetera, et cetera. You know, all these different factors. It, it seems like we're in a very strong position to make decisions based on what we need rather than having to rob Peter to pay Paul.
Yeah, I think the, we've done a nice job of catching up with facilities, which is often what's let go when budgets get tight.
Right.
Our staffing levels have stayed current. We've had a nice balance from what I'll call the staffing curve, meaning new to veteran. So as we see somebody retire unfortunately, we also see the ability to attract a very talented, younger, I shouldn't say younger, talented, but experienced. So we're not, you know, very seldom are we simply hiring somebody out of college because of what the budget says. If we're hiring somebody brand new, it's because they were the best candidate in the pool.
So speaking of that, do you have, have you opened the job for Nancy Kringle Burn's position?
We, we have and that is still open at this time and we're using services.
I actually met with Ann Elser prior to coming here and there are a number of candidates that she's currently vetting.
Okay.
And we're confident that we'll be able to get someone in place in a short amount of time.
Nancy will certainly be missed. I mean.
Absolutely.
You can't hire three newbies to replace her expertise. It's such a critical position, the reading.
Yeah, and it's a very challenging position to hire for, even in non-COVID times.
Thank you.
And we received no other retirement requests, so you're already aware of who had put in for retirement, been pre-COVID or as a result of their circumstances. But we didn't get any new requests for the December 1st deadline.
Thank you.
The only other question I had was the USDA Wellness Policy Coordinator. Is that a resource that's needed for some of our COVID activities or?
There are very, I'm going to use strict guidelines from the federal government because we receive federal funds for lunches. And there are a number of different procedural pieces and things that need to be done. And they request a wellness coordinator. And when you look at the amount of work that's done by district, by building, Kelly felt it was appropriate to offer a stipend so that, so you may see one person for $500 at HPS, one person at Hughes, you may see one person for the district. It'll all depend on who's interested when, when we go out to, to look for those divisions.
So it could be a shared resource across the SAU? Or do we need one in district?
It'll be more of a shared resource, but there'll be components of it that are very specific to the district. And Kelly will sort that all out, but it was just more, this was the most equitable way to, to support the position.
And if, in, within the wellness policy, there's a number of initiatives for both staff and students. And as a result, this person would help to oversee those, those initiatives within the building.
I see. Any other questions relating to the budget?
We had obviously an issue with the public hearing notice last year. What is the status of where we need to post those and how are, what are the assurances we're going to make that those actually go where, when and where they're supposed to go so we don't get caught again?
The problem we had was specifically with the bond, because the bond notice is the most stringent because obviously the magnitude of what you're spending.
Right.
Our, our alternative unfortunately is not much because we still have to deal with pretty much the national telegraph. I mean, we could put it in the union leader and meet the legal requirement, but very few people in this area of the community look at the union leader and that's not the intent. So, you know, Kelly got the information in, it was just the paper. What we plan to do is run it early and multiple times because then we'll have complied. So if they miss one date, we should be okay. And it kind of flows very nicely into our, our next topic because I really think that's the, the next piece we have to discuss is the SAU rent, long-term lease slash the bond for the bond. And let me just frame this because I emailed Rob this morning, I don't know how many of you were following Monday night. I wasn't able to participate because I was on a Zoom for teachers' contracts at the co-op, but there was a meeting on Monday regarding the folly building again. And at, at that point, I just want you to be aware, it was brought up again should the town, and they would be looking at FY 22, which would mean for the FY 23, looking at the, potentially the folly building becoming slash town hall slash SAU offices. Now, as I sent it to Rob, Rob has been down this road a few times and I've been down once or twice myself. I, I don't necessarily want to compete in terms of if I thought that was moving forward, I just don't know what the status is. We have a project that I think if we had, had our ducks in a row regarding the posting, had the potential to pass last year. I think this board and through Rob's work has really sold the, the drawbacks of the facility we currently have. The bond last year, it was priced at $1.4 million. I have a email out to our architect to see if there's an escalation cost because we're a year later. I have not heard back on that. Rob has been working on a couple of different models because the budget committee's concern was how much of the cost was going to be borne by Hollis taxpayers when it's an SAU facility. To start that ball rolling, we did the conflict of interest letter. So that was sent, as you can see from your form, to Erin Saris because she's the present chair of the SAU board and to Rob as the chair of this board, James O'Shaughnessy, who many of you know, would represent the SAU, and Tom Clausen, who does our contracts and has been with Hollis for, oh, as long as I can recall, would be representing this board so that there's no contact, conflict or anything to worry about. The, the bond rates have never been better. I mean, that's, that's, that's a big piece of this. I do think the budget committee recognizes the need. I think if they were provided with an avenue to regain some of the costs around this, that they could potentially support it. Sitting in my chair, I can tell you we need it. We presently have two and three people sharing four and 600-foot spaces in the midst of COVID. We are in that unfortunate time of year where one of our local animals has passed away, which is an annual fall and spring event at the SAU. And we get some wonderful smells.
Well, and the masks don't help. It doesn't help.
No. And Bob has.
My mother says to put peppermint. You put a, you put a little essential oil in your mask at the beginning of the day.
We need something because it's a, it's a tough time of year and it will be that way in the spring.
Well, it makes you open the windows, which is good for ventilation.
Yep. We have, just so you know, solved quite a bit of the attic issue because for those of you who are relatively new, this started out as a safety concern because the sheer weight of the documents we're required to hold was in the attic. So we have the container outside now, which is temperature controlled and has the vast majority of our HR records in it. So that is working well, but we're interested to see how we get through the first winter because we regularly need to access that information. I think the plan we put forward is solid. The basement of the bond would be our storage area, temperature controlled, and give us places for storage for many years to come. The first floor of the bond is a combination meeting space as well as offices. So many nights where heating this building at this time of night in the middle of the winter, we could be heating a much smaller location unless we anticipated a large audience. We would anticipate that space being able to be utilized by other committees from the town. We don't just look at it as our private space. And then the second floor would be more offices and, and bathrooms. So what I'm looking for, because there's some work to be done regarding a warrant article and things of that nature, if, if the board has interest in moving forward, if the board wants to see where the town goes, you know, again, because if, if money wasn't in the picture and you said to me, you know, from most prestigious place, you know, in town, great location, the folly building has that. One thing it doesn't have is I think there'd be parking problems because you've got a medical, middle school staff, town office staff, SAU staff. I'm not sure if it has enough space for that. But as far as, you know, picturesque and if the building was fixed and rehab, you know, it'd be great. So if you were saying, is that the best place 10 years, 15 years from now, whenever? Maybe. But at the same time, that's at least three years away, you know? And I, I just think we, we need to determine what's, what's best from a Hollis board perspective in a, in a home for the SAU. And I'll throw it out for questions, comments or direction on where we're going next.
I'll, I'll reserve my comments. So you guys go first.
So I guess, can you explain a little bit more about what's the timeline for the Farley Building? You said we've been down this road before. How far have we gotten, you know?
Amy, there is zero concrete plan on the Farley Building. Someone stood up at a Board of Selectmen meeting on the 28th of September and said, hey, what are the plans for the Farley Building? And the Board of Selectmen said they would look at it later and they held a public hearing. It was, there was a, and the reason I'm chiming in specifically is because it was at the BudCon meeting in November, during that meeting that Mr. Ledoux, who is the chairman of the Board of Selectmen and he's their liaison to the BudCon, made a comment, kind of an offhanded, hey, we're going to have this public hearing about the Farley Building. If this goes through, maybe that could be where the SAU gets housed. And everyone was kind of like, what? And we kind of moved forward with the meeting. And then they were having this public hearing on Monday night and the public hearing was literally that, to just kind of discuss all the possibilities. The, the Historical Society has expressed interest in having more space for their museum, so historical building in the Farley space, possibly having the SAU rent the space there rather than rent our space at Forlan Lane. Town offices, the clerk, things like that, like every possible resident that could be in that building was mentioned as a possibility. So is there a plan? No. It was, okay, let's form a committee. We'd like to see a committee formed and start moving forward on that. So it, I don't know that anybody in this room could actually speak to the probability of this happening. There are two camps of people, it seems, in, in town, those who would give their right arm to not let anything bad happen to the Farley Building. And then there are the other group of people who are like, it, it's barely standing, either.
Bulldoze it.
Bulldoze it and put up a park or build an entirely new version of it, essentially.
Because there's been some talk throughout the community over the past few years to make that more of like a community center.
So remember that three years ago, someone in town offered seed money.
But it was specific to, for a specific use of the building, had to be around STEM.
Right. And, and, and also I think senior citizens also, I think, or something, which was lovely, all of it, great ideas, like you said, myriad wonderful uses are imaginable. And the select board at the time recommended giving the building's deed to the Hollis School District to deal with it. And a cursory walkthrough that Rob took.
It wasn't a recommendation. We came to them and said, we are interested in the building. We wanted to, I think we originally owned it, sold it to the town for a dollar and we said, give it back to us for a dollar. There was, aligning that to any discussion about renovation of that property, we could not garner one person on the selectmen, on the select board that would support that. They said renovations would be far too expensive. I think our estimates was between three and $5 million. I think the latest is maybe in the middle somewhere. So you're looking at a, a project that's arguably two and a half or three times more than our project. It has no plan and we're three years down the road and we were literally rejected. They said, we don't want to talk about the Farley Building at all.
But three years down the road of non-work on the building, it has moldered three more years.
Three more years.
Correct.
And it's a little inexplicable three years hence, with the same people on the same board, all of a sudden, the exact same proposal is coming back.
Yeah.
And I think this board, probably more than anyone, can appreciate the work that needs to go into any kind of a plan on any property.
Yes.
We've been doing this, well, probably.
Six years now.
For four years, three or four years.
Six. And then you had already had architects visiting the barn for years before that.
So Rob, can I just clarify that is our discussion right now around bringing the Farley Building into the mix, but it's, it's whether or not we as a board are looking to pursue the, the bond or moving towards the bond?
The Forlan Lane renovation.
For, for, okay.
Right.
Yes.
All right. Okay.
So I think, I think the superintendent is bringing this of added aspect.
As an added complication to the.
Sure. I mean, that's one way to characterize it.
I don't think it's a complication. It's just a factor for the conversation. Because that's what just happened two nights ago.
To Carol's question, there's no one here comment, there's nobody here able to say probability of something happening. I'm willing to stick my neck out and say the probability of something really legitimate in even a remotely timely way happening with that building between the time it takes to decide on a plan and then execute some kind of architectural plan, et cetera, and then do the fundraising, bond, whatever, I.
That answers my question. I was just wondering, are we going on like, you know?
Amy's like full.
We're a little past, we're not.
It's like putting us four years ago, talking about Lunn Lane, that's where they are right now.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
In my opinion.
Yes.
So I probably can, can guess my point of view on this. We cannot make decisions for our district based on what our town is making decisions on for the buildings that they own. The only reason that this is part of our conversation right now is because the mention of our current tenant possibly becoming their tenant. That's the only connection here. We have a solid plan for Forlan Lane. It is fully vetted. It is a good price. And I think that we're able to, you know, money costs very little right now with bond rates. And I think that we are able to pursue a financial plan that the citizens of Hollis are going to be very happy with to support this renovation at Forlan Lane on the schedule that we would like to pursue it this year.
The only question I have though, Carol, is, not though, I agree with you 100%, but I think what is, the question is, will the citizenship say, but the Farley Building is, you know, the. is, you know, the town's antique school, there are people alive today whose names are on the Revolutionary War...
That's fine.
Soldiers Monument, who went to school in that building, and there's a sentiment for keeping it, although I just don't think practically it's even, I'm not even sure it can be saved.
Correct. But this is what, this is the division...
I don't think anyone knows that question yet.
No one knows that question. They won't know that question until they're a year into a project to try to figure out what can be saved. It's not a question of or, it's a question of, these are the projects that the district has right now. If that is a consideration that a citizen wants to make of something that could quite possibly be a pipe dream at this point, because we just don't know, then that is the decision that they are going to make for themselves. I can't control that. There are lots of factors for people. What we can control is all of the work that we've put in, solid plan, solid tenant, this would, you know, there would be a consideration here that it has to be dependent on the signing of a long-term lease with our current tenant.
I would argue that's the case regardless, right?
Correct. That's what I mean. That's what I'm saying. Like, again, the Farley Building's not a consideration for me. That is a town-owned structure. It will be a consideration for me as a citizen, making my votes about how my money is spent as taxpayer. But as a member of this board, this is a, I want us to move forward with this and the financial plan that we have, and allow the citizens to see exactly what is going to work out financially on it, so they can make their decisions today or in the future on what they want to do with any other thing that they're voting on for other entities.
And we presented our plan beautifully, I think, at the meeting in March, despite the fact that we couldn't bring it to a vote because of circumstances. But I mean, the public has had a year to look at it by the time we bring it back to another district meeting and think about it and recognize money's even cheaper now than it was a year ago, I think.
Yeah.
It won't, it's not likely money will be cheaper than this in four or five years when a Farley Building plan would get made.
Right.
So my perspective on this is similar to yours with some of the historical context, because I actually tried to sell this at some point. So what I would say is that we have no say or stake in that building. To not pursue our plan is to put all our hopes and our aspirations into another entity that may or may not give us the square footage that we need to operate. We may find ourselves in a similar position, just in another building. I would ask you to consider...
When you say "we," you're talking about our tenant, the SAU.
Our tenant, the SAU, yes. Thank you for that distinction.
The tenant, SAU, may have an issue there.
They may find themselves, we have no control and no say.
You know something? That's a really important point. With a town-owned facility, we, our tenants, the tenants that our district is most responsible for, doesn't have the same priority potentially as they do in a built...
Correct.
...property owned by the school district.
So I keep referring to them as the tenant because...
They are.
That is what they are.
That's exactly what they are.
Absolutely right.
And it's easy to model that.
But we also have to pay part of that rent, being a member of the SAU. So it is a cost to the board, but also a concern for our tenant.
Yeah. And I'm, I can't explain or close the, you know, get the ends to meet, that three years ago, it was absolutely out of the question.
Absolutely.
And now it's, now in December, we're kind of floating it out there from, I don't know where it's coming from.
I have a feeling the building is in trouble, and they need to start confronting how to address it, you know, maybe.
So for me, I say, I don't have enough in front of me to say, yeah, we may have to second, we may have to hold back a little bit on our plans. For me, I've got nothing. I look at, somebody's talking about something over here, and we have a engineered plan, we've got a floor plan, it's tailored to our needs, or to the tenants' needs, thank you. And we've got, we've got it cost-vetted pretty darn well, and we're coming back with a revenue plan to cover the costs. So some of the work that Andy has talked about, that I've been working on, I basically said, look, the project costs this much. This is the term, this is the revenue we have to build plus cover maintenance. This is what the rent looks like. It's pretty cut and dry. So I think that's, that's what we bring forward, as well as any kind of lease. Those were the two missing components that kept us from getting very solid stakeholder support.
Yep. Both the BudCon and the citizenry had that feedback.
The two things they said, we're addressing them. So that's, we're pretty far down the road. I cannot support, I won't support shelving our plans. I feel that if we can get a bond approved, we still have about a year or so window to say, well, we have some level of time to look at what's happening to Farley. We could choose not to execute the bond.
That's true.
If we see significant work and planning and...
Significant.
I mean, significant. But I want to point out that a bond approval at a March meeting is not, you're not compelled to actually carry it out.
That's right.
They're just saying, yeah, if you guys want to go ahead and do it, we are approving it. So it does give, it does provide a little bit more runway for Farley.
Without putting the brakes on completely on our way ahead.
Right. So that's where I'm at with this. I can't, I can't justify stopping our plans for whatever is starting to coalesce.
That's why I initially asked the question, because I was like, wait.
Where are we going with this?
Yeah. Both of you articulated it very well, and I agree that we're in a very good position to seek the, seek the bond.
So do you need some sort of action, Andy? Are you just assessing the board?
No, I think, I think there's a definite consensus, and what we'll do next month is, as part of our board meeting, we'll go through the plan again. We still have all the renderings and that, bring it up. I'll have, obviously, our attorneys are already working on this proposal, because part of it was the document we received tonight about the conflict of interest. The other piece of it is now that we plan to move forward, one of the pieces that we wanted to do was subdivide the field from the actual SAU building. And I didn't want to start to enter into legal fees for that until we were kind of sure. And I think that's the right decision, even if the bond didn't pass.
Right, I agree.
So I don't, you know, I'll move forward with that, and we'll start that process, because I think even down the road, if the folly was to materialize, we still want that field for the kids. We may still want the property, because in some ways, if you ever had to build a school, you now have the land and an entrance to the property. And, you know, again, Hollis is...
That's a very good point.
Hollis is land-rich, but many towns struggle when they need to build a new school, where to put it.
That's a really key point, because that field is landlocked without us owning the building. Because we could actually make that the entranceway to a expanded school. Without it, I don't know what you'd do. You bulldoze the old school, build a bridge.
You'd have to build a bridge over the...
You'd have to build a bridge over that stream.
That little stream, which is, I wouldn't say it's a minor issue, because you're going to get into all sorts of environmental pieces. So we'll move forward with that. I'll give Kelly the notice. And I appreciate that. I felt compelled to make you aware of the discussion.
Yeah.
Because I didn't want it to come back, and two weeks later, you say, well, I didn't even know they were thinking of this, to Tammy's point.
Well, I knew about the event, but I didn't know the history of it. It's very funny telling you the thing.
Oh, there's a long history.
Oh, goodness, yeah.
So with the...
Four months and...
We can move ahead?
With your permission, I'll move ahead.
So the only other thing is, I'm, I passed this document along to our attorney, or my attorney, our attorney. For guidance.
Yep.
And I just said, I just want guidance where we're at, and as soon as I hear back from Tom, I'm prepared to sign and get that signed and done.
And my understanding is Greg M., who's bond counsel, will be reaching out to Jim and Tom, so there's three attorneys, each representing three specific things, Greg, the financial piece of the bond, Jim, the SAU, Tom, the Hollis School District. And once we do this and have this signed document, then we can proceed at the SAU meeting to start to discuss rents and proposals and leases and that. And once it's signed, Jim's side will start to work on the actual lease that the Hollis School Board would approve, because there'll be no conflict at that point.
Okay.
And Tom is not a real estate attorney, he's a labor attorney. So he'll, once the conflict is over, he doesn't need to do that.
Okay.
Yep.
And then after that, we put the notice, bond notice, in the paper every week.
Every week.
Right till March.
Every week.
Yep.
Nonstop.
Yep.
I'll stand at the four cars and be like, read it! Dog notice!
All right. Let's move on to see what action the board will take regarding the public school infrastructure and facilities grant.
Okay. In your board packet, Kelly had provided you an update for our infrastructure grant, and I'm just going to quickly highlight that. If you pass the motion, which I'm hoping you will, then I'll pass four documents. You need to sign each one of the four documents so that we can file to get reimbursed. What happened in the summer of FY 2020 was the infrastructure grants had all come out, and we had applied and were very successful. A number of districts couldn't spend their allocation, so we were allowed to decide if we would follow through with proposals we had put in that weren't approved. And we were ready to go because we were already doing the cameras anyways. So in FY '21 projects for board approval, at HPS, we did security cameras, which had At HPS, we did security cameras, which had a total cost of $46,069. a total cost of $46,069. Eighty percent of that, or $26,872, was paid by the state, and $19,197 was paid out of Eighty percent of that, or $26,872, was paid by the state, and $19,197 was paid out of our budget, and we had already budgeted for that. our budget, and we had already budgeted for that. Security cameras at Hughes, total cost was $26,805. Security cameras at Hughes, total cost was $26,805. $21,444 came from the infrastructure grant, $5,361 from us, for our total of $24,559. $21,444 came from the infrastructure grant, $5,361 from us, for our total of $24,559. Just to be aware, we had budgeted $32,000 for cameras, so we were actually able to save Just to be aware, we had budgeted $32,000 for cameras, so we were actually able to save by taking advantage of this grant. by taking advantage of this grant. And this is kind of accredited again to Kelly's five-year plan, because it's so sequential, And this is kind of accredited again to Kelly's five-year plan, because it's so sequential, it was easy for us to jump on the grant and take advantage of other districts not being it was easy for us to jump on the grant and take advantage of other districts not being prepared. prepared. Excuse me. Excuse me. The two other pieces from FY '19 projects for board approval that we had discussed The two other pieces from FY '19 projects for board approval that we had discussed on many occasions, we did indoor door replacements down at HPS. on many occasions, we did indoor door replacements down at HPS. Total cost was $129,390. Total cost was $129,390. The grant funding accounted for $103,512, so we paid $25,878. The grant funding accounted for $103,512, so we paid $25,878. Excuse me. Excuse me. Improvement to security at Hughes, this was your window film, your doorframer, tares, blinds, cameras, and additional fog readers and thumb locks. That was $87,311. The grant paid $69,849, and the district paid $17,462. So out of the grant totals, we qualified, were able to utilize $289,575 worth of total cost, of which the state infrastructure grant paid $221,677, and we paid $67,899. So we...
That's extraordinary.
It is. It's wonderful.
Yeah. I can't commend Kelly enough. And this occurred not only in Hollis, but in Brookline, as well as the Co-op. So I want to say probably somewhere between a half a million, right around a half a million dollars was saved by being able to and being prepared for these. And it's, again, her system is working really well, which we're seeing with our budget and her ability to pull this off, and that's why she is adamant that I have to come back with signatures tomorrow, so she can make the end of the deadline. I don't know if this program will exist again, but obviously, we are prepared if it does. I do also want to say that you probably saw in the papers that the, we were getting $200 per student. That money is coming in, and then there was $10 million that you had to apply for. So we met that deadline of December 1st. Very fortunately, right now, because it only went from September to December, there were about $33,000 worth of costs not covered that we requested reimbursement for. A little more than that in the, in the Co-op. Hollis was fortunate that the town allowed us to jump on one of their grants. And in Brookline, that number was probably double Hollis, because we were not able to access the town, because they needed it for their own pieces. So, again, compliments to her and all the ladies upstairs. They keep us running every day. It's just amazing. So...
Do you want a motion, Andy?
Pardon me?
Do you want a motion on that?
I need a motion and an approval, and then I'll send my forms around for signatures.
So motion to approve the acceptance and expenditure of the public school infrastructure facilities grant in the amount of $48,316, parentheses, eighty percent of total upper limit cost, based on estimate provided in application. For security cameras at the middle and high schools, the district portion of $24,559 was funded through budgeted district funding.
A second. Well done.
Yep.
Yeah, this seems to be a straightforward decision for me. All right. With that said, all in favor of the motion? Five zero zero. Get your pens out.
You can start.
To see what action the board will take regarding Policy JICK, Public Safety and Violence Prevention, second reading.
Motion to accept the second reading of Policy JICK, Pupil Safety and Violence Prevention, Bullying as amended.
Discussion.
So the change in here has been highlighted, I believe. Right? I'm not seeing it.
It says, proposed change to the second paragraph under student reporting, page three. That's what's in Don's...
Yep.
Yes, I'm sorry. So, yes, exactly. The second paragraph under student reporting, we made a slight change there to make it consistent with another paragraph in the policy.
That's right. That makes sense. So it says, any school employee or volunteer who receives a report of or has knowledge of bullying, or, sorry, has knowledge or belief that bullying may have occurred, shall inform the principal as soon as possible and within 48 hours.
Right. There was a timing, Brooke pointed this out, there was like, it was inconsistent between the timing of, in the student reporting section versus the staff reporting. So we've just shored that up.
Amy, do we have to just take this as a second reading, or could we move to adopt if we're all set with it?
We could move to adopt if we are comfortable doing that.
So the motion could read, to accept...
Second reading, waive the...
The second reading and waive the third.
Third, and adopt.
Right. Policy JICK. So you'd have to amend your own motion.
Should I make that...
Rob, can we have a, do you mind if we have, if Amy amends the motion?
Should I...
You can amend any motion you like.
May I amend my motion? Okay. I'm going to amend my motion to accept the second reading, waive the third reading, and adopt Policy JICK, Pupil Safety and Violence Prevention, Bullying as amended.
My second.
Any discussion on the...
Yeah, Amy, I have a question. This is so lengthy and important. I guess, was there, was there a lot of discussion that needed to go into forming this, or is this stuff that's like pulled directly from...
So there was lengthy conversation around this policy at the Co-op level.
Okay.
And that's kind of where we started. And then, basically, once they adopted that policy, and we brought it forward to this board to try to keep the policy as consistent among the districts as possible.
Okay. So is this the exact same policy then, that they have already adopted?
Except for the amendment that we have just now made to shore up those timelines.
Ah.
Because it'll probably ripple back through...
It may, right. It may.
Bounce back. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And nothing prevents the equity work that's going forward from us revisiting this anytime.
No.
If it's found that through the DEI initiative, there are things... If it's found that through the DEI initiative, there are things that need to happen in this policy or any other policy, we can bring it back forward.
Okay. That's kind of what I was thinking, that I was like, I tried to see it through that lens, but didn't, I don't have the right glass.
No, there's no lockdown, like, once you've approved it, it has to sit for X period of time before you can bring it back.
We could reopen it tomorrow, if we wanted to.
Yep. That's what I needed to hear. Thank you.
And actually, if we needed to, and this is my understanding, I could be corrected, but even if you found a policy so in defect, the board could take an action and say, we waived the whole policy for... A lot of times, you don't even need a, you don't have to have a reason. It would be good if you had one to do such an action, but...
Thank you, sorry.
Boards have a lot of leeway that way. But you need to explain why you're doing what you're doing, and then we hear from the public. So, that's the check and balance.
That it came down from the Co-op, that was helpful to the handles of how it unfolded to get to where it is.
Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none. All in favor? From JCI, ICK, five zero zero. To see what action the board will take regarding Policy DD Funding Proposal and Application, second reading.
All right.
So, why don't we start with the motion?
Yep. I'm going to push my luck here with the motion.
All right.
I'm going to motion to accept the second reading, waive the third, and adopt Policy DD Funding Proposals and Applications.
A second.
Excellent. Well done. Discussion. Any major changes since first reading?
No, none. Nope.
Can I ask a question, though, since I missed the first reading on this? It says, on a quarterly basis, the superintendent will provide the Hollis School Board a report detailing all possible sources of state, federal, and other funds of support. I mean, is Andy really supposed to make a specific line item report on possible grants four times a year?
Well, this came as a result of a grant that was applied for last year. And so, we felt like we, the board, maybe wanted a little more transparency before the grants were applied for, so that we didn't get into a pickle.
Okay. Good. I don't remember any of that. It's fine.
So, that was related to...
Thanks for reminding me.
The NRA.
Almost in the summer, the NRA proposal.
Oh, that. I'm done.
I was trying to say it without saying it.
There you go, say it.
It was not, it was not a normal grant.
There's no Voldemort out there.
Yep.
Yep, it's good.
Okay.
Yeah, I, my sense is that Andy brings us almost every meeting, some updates on federal funding or grants that we're doing. So, I think we're more than meeting the quarterly updates on that.
Good enough. I'm sorry, I had a momentary...
No, it's fine. This is perfect to answer, ask those questions. Anything else regarding DD? Seeing none. All in favor? Five zero zero. To see what actions the board will take regarding ECAD, Security Camera Systems, second reading.
All right. Here we go again. I am going to motion to accept the second reading, waive the third, and adopt Policy ECAD, Security Camera System.
A second.
Discussion.
There have been no changes since the first reading.
All right. I'm not seeing anything else. All in favor of ECAD? Five zero zero. To see what actions the board will take regarding ECAD-R, Security Camera System Administrative Procedures, second reading.
All right. Motion to accept the second reading, waive the third, and adopt Policy ECAD-R, Security Camera System and Administrative Procedure.
A second.
Discussion.
You know, can I say something? I'm a tad uncomfortable with something brand-new, breaking with the norm of three readings. Is it important, Andy, to you? Bob, do you guys need this to get into place ASAP, or can it...
Regarding the security cameras, I would appreciate it, only because they're all installed, and we have an existing policy, but we've taken our scope of cameras from one or two to kind of really property security. So, that's why I would appreciate it. And it's, these are already existing policies in other districts in the SAU, so it's more just a little catch-up for us.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And the fact that it's actually a dash R, isn't that actually...
The regulations.
It's the regulations of a policy. So, it reports up to what we just passed.
Right.
So, this is just a breakout.
That's also new. So, but I think that the response that I just heard, which is that we kind of have a pressing need to allow something to put in place for security reasons, is valid.
And again, we can bring it up at next meeting and revisit the policy.
We could, but, I mean, that's, but you get my point. That's fine.
I do.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Seeing none. All in favor? Five zero zero. To see what actions the board will take regarding Policy EFD Wellness, second reading.
Okay. I'm just going to motion to accept the second reading of Policy EFD Wellness.
Second.
Discussion. Is there a reason why you're not motioning to waive second reading?
Just felt like I was pressing my luck, and this is very lengthy, and we had talked about having the wellness coordinator as part of the budget, and I thought people just might want to take another read of this one.
Okay. We'll let it be for another month.
Okay.
Is there any implications?
Nope.
No?
Yeah, I haven't read completely throughout myself.
Okay.
Bedtime reading.
It's fun reading. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
But it touches every stakeholder in the district.
Very well, then...
Is this one that's already in place in the other districts?
No, they're in about the same process as you. They're somewhere between second and third reading, depending on where they are.
Okay. And is there communication between the policy committees, then, so that you're like, hearing the changes that they're...
Gina is, Gina is on all the policy committees. So, she brings, yeah.
The conduit.
Exactly. Yep.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none. All in favor of EFD?
Accepting the second reading.
Second reading, yeah.
Second reading, yes. Five zero zero. To see what actions the board will take regarding Policy DAF, Federal Grant Funds, second reading.
Yeah. I'm going to motion to accept the second reading of Policy DAF, Administration of Federal Grant Funds. This is, oh, sorry.
And not waive?
No, no. Second for this one.
Just making sure.
Yep.
Do you have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay.
Right. So, this is, this is a very long one. This is a new policy, and I think the one that was in the packet last month didn't have all of the, you know, specific language to our district. It was more the template that we looked at last.
And this is sitting with the other districts as well?
Correct.
Seeing no other comments. All in favor of DAF, second reading? Five zero zero. To see what action the board will take regarding Policy EEAA, Video and Audio Recording on School Property, first reading.
I motion to accept the first reading of Policy EEAA, Video and Audio Recording on School Property. Second.
Any discussion on this?
So, I'll just mention that this is a new policy because of the recent installation of the security cameras.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Did the bulk of this come from the...
Sample, from the, yeah, New Hampshire School Board Association. And then, we tweaked it based on where we actually, like, our security cameras don't have audio recording, so we tweaked it such, you know, it just specifies video recording and that was...
So, this is needed in addition to ECAD-R, the administration, administrative procedures of the security cameras, or is this more broad? I'm just trying to get context of...
One talks about what's being recorded on school property. One talks about what an administrator is allowed to review.
I see.
And then, the regulations that apply to. So, typically, to give you an example, I allow the principals to watch recordings. Now, it'll be on school property. Before this, it would have been the school bus.
Right.
It would have been, okay? That is not allowed to be seen by a parent or anybody who's not designated by me, because there's confidentiality pieces to that.
Sure.
It'll be the same thing with school cameras. And again, the policies are consistent. Where you see it more come to light is potentially like at the high school, when maybe you run into a fight or something, you can pull up the cameras. But in one case, you say, okay, we've notified everybody to have video surveillance. We have allowed certain administrators to look at the videotape. So, they would go to it, and they have permission to do that, and make their findings based on the tape, and review it with families if needed, those type of things, depending on what's in there. And then, the third one is, who can actually view the video, because you don't necessarily want the secretary deciding that we're going to just pull it up and show it. So, that's why there's three different things, because they address three specific pieces.
I see.
So, there's something that kind of stands out to me about this, is it does not specifically mention that the recording is being done by the district. So, when I see this, a video recording on school property, every student in the high school has a phone with a camera on it in their pocket that can record video and audio. Is there anything, I feel like there should be something in here that is making the distinction that we're not talking about a kid on his phone filming a fight at the high school. We're talking about the surveillance cameras installed by the district capturing that and what could be not with it.
As part of the facilities.
Yeah.
Because the students are forbidden by policy from using their devices, so that's separate. You're right.
The, I have no problem if we want to make that clarification, Carol. The piece is, when you walk in now, you'll see the notice that says, video surveillance. That's kind of your official notice, that we, the formal owners of the facility, are doing that surveillance. But I do see your piece, so if you wanted to add that for the second reading or something, I don't think it creates a problem.
Okay. Yeah, as long as it doesn't create a conflict with what the purpose of this is, I just feel like even just a one-liner, this is in reference to, I know it goes back to Policy JICD, if it refers back.
You make perfectly...
But just a single line, basically, saying, this is in reference to video being taken by the district in accordance with whatever other policies we need to say. This does not address, this is not referring to video or audio recordings by any individual whatever in the building. I don't know how to write that, but it kind of goes along with the handbook, because it's not, it's not an issue in our schools, really. I'm thinking more, that's more of a, you know, something that you would deal with at the middle and high school level.
I mean, the biggest piece...
At a read, it just doesn't, it isn't clear.
Right. No, we can definitely tweak the wording. I'll talk to Gina, and she can try to bring something to Amy in the committee. I mean, the biggest thing here is really putting people on notice that, like, if this was a major discipline piece, that video can become part of your permanent discipline record.
Right.
Yeah, further on Carol's point, as I'm scrolling through it again and reading it again, on that last page, the video and audio recording authorized is suddenly referring to private video media. The school board permits...
Is it?
Is it?
It doesn't say.
It doesn't say.
You can make the assumption, because, you know, mom and dad are going to attend a musical performance and videotape the kids, but does that mean that the district is also then taking a video or audio recording of these things that they may keep for posterity?
I agree with you. It all needs clarifying. I would argue, I would agree with you for sure.
I mean, the most common one that you see videotaped at the elementary school would be the school play, you know, at the holiday season and things like that. You know, again, I think for a first reading, I would recommend passing this, and then we'll take the comments back, and I'll share them with Gina, because I think they're very valid.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's the beauty of first reading. Any other discussion or comment on this particular first reading? Seeing none. All in favor?
Thanks, Amy.
Yep, thank you.
Five zero zero. Yeah, that's a lot of work there. Wow. You guys have been busy.
I know.